Hi, welcome to our video series where we are going to be helping Gen Zs ages ten to twenty navigate through various parts of their life. Whether it be questions around how to navigate school or friends, family, relationships, job opportunities and much, much more. The idea here is that you all are going to be next generation leaders. And we want to offer many resources so that your path to leadership is more informed and less frustrating. My name is Anu Yogeishwaran and I am accompanied by two of my students.
Hi, I'm Tanija.
Hi, I'm Mayura.
Forward to educating all of you on various topics as I mentioned. For today's series, we're really, really happy to welcome Yalini Rajakulasingham, our special guest, who actually is a Toronto District School Board trustee from Scarborough North Ward twenty-one. As the elected representative of TDSB, she advocates on Scarborough's behalf and plays a big role in ensuring a bright future for the community. Along with advocating for the students and parents of TDSB and helping students navigate through school, she has a strong passion revolving the arts, partnadium specifically, and arts advocacy. And she's worked with the city of Toronto and many, many nonprofit Toronto art organizations focusing on arts advocacy and cultural policy. In today's episode, Yalini will be covering four specific areas. One, how students can navigate through mental health issues. Two, resources to protect students from cyberbullying. Three, the appeal process for expelled and suspended students. And number four, pathways to specialized programs specifically for students who are just entering high school. So without further ado, let's get the show started. Yalini, thank you so much for coming to our video series where we are helping Gen Zs ages ten to twenty just navigate life. I'm so happy that you're going to be touching on various topics that really, really mean a lot to them. So let's just get started by asking a bit about background. What inspired you to become a school trustee? And what are the duties of a school trustee, if you can explain it, that will, that a ten-year-old or fifteen-year-old will understand that as well?
Sure, thanks so much, Anu, Mayura and Tanija for having me on. I think these are really important conversations and it's great to stay connected at a time when we're all so distant and isolated. I think the turning point was a few years ago, I had an incident with cyberbullying where I was, you know, cyberbullied for about a year. And it really impacted my own mental health. And at that point, I was in my twenties. So it made me think if at my twenties, I, it impacted me so much. Imagine our students who are all online, everyone is online on some form or another. And it made me think that we need to make sure that online safety and safe spaces are available to our students. So in the last municipal election, as, as you may know, when we vote for our councillor and our mayor, we also vote for our, our local trustee. So in Ontario, our public education is divided by local school boards. So in Toronto, we have the largest school board, which is a Toronto District School Board. It's actually the largest in Canada and it's about six hundred schools and two hundred fifty thousand students. So it's pretty wide. So we have trustees for each ward that know what their community needs are and they communicate that to the board. So your trustee is your representation at the school board. And there's two, there's two main responsibilities that we have. One, in our communities, whenever a parent or a guardian has a concern and they want support with it, then they would approach their trustee. And then we would support them with that. And we work with our principals and our superintendent. The second is we get funding from the province. So the Ontario province is funds, the school boards funds education. So when they give us the funding, we determine how to allocate that money. But also when it comes to policies, so back to school, that was a really big thing that impacted us. How did back to school look in a, in a pandemic time? And we determined those back to school, we had all twenty-two trustees come together because, well, again, like when we looked at virtual schools, half of my students were in virtual schools and that may not be the case in another part of the city. So the needs of my, of my ward is different than the needs of a different ward. So we come together, we discuss based on the needs of our community and we come to a decision. So that those are, those are some of the things that we do as trustees.
It, it sounds like a pretty loaded job with a lot of communication with parents and students. So we really definitely appreciate all the service that you provide. Right, Tanija, on to you.
Now we're going to transition more into the mental health aspects of things. So I feel that sometimes adults, they can overlook the stresses that we students have because, you know, we're not, we're working eight-hour jobs or we don't have to stress about bills. But as a student, as a student in high school, I can tell you that we definitely have our own set of stresses. So I'll give you a few examples, Yalini, and we can talk through them. So the first one is choosing a career path. I know I'm going through this myself right now and a lot of my peers are. I just feel that when we're forced to make such a huge decision that's going to impact at least the next four years of our lives, there's not enough resources out there that schools are providing to help students from grade nine to eleven explore. So what specific events or resources should schools be providing students to help explore different career paths?
That's a really good question, Tanija. There's usually two paths. Sometimes some students have an understanding from a young age of what they want to do or what type of career path they want to take. And sometimes some students don't. And what I wanted to share is it's okay. It's okay to not know what you want to do when you're in high school. Cause sometimes even when you go into university, you still are still figuring it out. And I think sometimes when we're so focused on one thing, we kind of forget about all the possibilities and things that are happening around us. So what I like to say is be open to possibilities. While you may have an idea of what you want to do in the career you want to go to, don't let that stop you from the other, the other possibilities that may come up. Because it's along the way that we find out what our strengths are, what our weaknesses are and what we're really good at. So what I would advise is talk to people on network. So make sure that, you know, maybe there's an organization that is an arts organization or something in sciences. Talk to those people in those organizations, volunteer with them and get to know how they got to where they are. If you find that there's something you're really interested in, but you can't find, speak to your teacher or your principal. And they may, you know, our principals at the, at the TSB, we talk about student voice and honoring student voice. So when a student says, I want this, but I can't see, I can't find it, your principal and your teacher will make it work, right? Because we want to make sure that you have access to something that you need. So while there, there are always organizations that are getting involved with schools, if there's someone that you want to work with or you want to learn more about, reach out to your teacher and they, they will make it work.
Yeah, definitely. Yeah, having an open mindset when it comes to careers is really important because, you know, even when we look at people who are in their twenties and thirties, so many people are constantly pivoting. Okay, so I guess we can move on to the next one, which is balancing preparing for the future while still being a kid. But there's so much pressure to, especially in a South Asian home, you know, you gotta get those high marks. You gotta get into a prestigious university. So, so many students are like locked up in their rooms studying instead of having pressure. And obviously this can have a huge impact on our physical and mental health. So what are some time management tips you advised students so that we can have the best of both worlds?
Everyone has different time management strategies and I think it's sometimes trial and error, right? You see what works for you, what doesn't work for, for others. And what works for me is lists. I live by to-do lists. So every Sunday or Monday morning, I'll make a to-do list of for that week. I'll say, what are my goals? What are my tasks I want to achieve this week? Cause sometimes when we don't have focus or goals on what we want to achieve, it feels like we want to do so much, but we don't have a path to do that. Break it down to many, many things that daily, I want to do this, I want to do that. And sometimes you may hit the list, sometimes you won't, but it's okay. And the next day you get to try again.
When you mentioned the list thing, honestly, like making that checkmark off of your to-do list is one of the most satisfying feelings in the world. Okay, so let's move on to the next one. Not all students are privileged enough to have necessary finances to join things like tutor if they need extra help, for example. And what happens is students end up feeling dumb because they're not motivated to learn anymore. And even going beyond that, a lot of families struggle financially, especially with this whole COVID pandemic going on. And as a result, instead of like focusing on school, they're focusing on, oh, how can I support my family? Like I need to find jobs. My question is, what does a student do in that situation? Because obviously they want to support their family, but then they also need to focus on school.
For sure. We are aware that not everyone could afford an extracurricular activity or a tutor. So that's why it's important that if a student is having a hard time in a subject, that there are extra supports in school to make sure that they don't feel overwhelmed or not supportive. And we also have high school students that are, are in need of a job. And what we can do is we, the TDSB has partnerships with different organizations that can help them find work.
So you mentioned the TDSB is partnering up with some organizations. Since you work with the TDSB, do you know any of those? Can you name a few?
There is one called Tropicana. What happened is we sometimes, there's something called shared alternative learning. And sometimes we have some students, because until you're eighteen, you're supposed to be at school. But we do have some students due to a personal circumstance where they need to leave school for a short period and go to work. So for those students, what we do is we, we partner up with organizations like Tropicana. And there are a few other two that I can find out and I can, I can let you know later, Tanija, and you can link it to folks that are wanting to learn more. And what they do is they provide the skills, resume building and, and things you may need in order to enter a workforce. And what happens is it's not, it's not something that every student needs, but some students need, don't have a choice and are required to go to work. And for those students, we do try to support them by finding them safe workspaces so that we can still keep an eye and make sure that they're being taken care of and they're being supported.
Yeah, thank you. And for the last stress that I want to cover on is, you know, there's that saying that you can be in a room full of a hundred other people, but you still feel alone, right? And a lot of teenagers go through this where, yeah, they might have this family support, but they feel like they're in such a dark place and they don't know how to come out of it. So what are some resources students can use to get help? Like, are there any specific numbers?
So in January, we actually conducted a survey with our, for our students in grades seven to twelve, where we wanted to measure their mental health, their stress, their relationships. And one of the findings that came out of it was we found that a lot of our students are struggling, they're stressed and they're very nervous about their future. And also, of course, there are some households where there's an increase in domestic violence. So we're finding that there are some situations that are very difficult for our students and are making us very nervous for them as well. And one thing that we have done is we've increased our mental health supports at school. So while you can access supports outside of school, if you go through your school system, every school has a social worker. And while they're connecting you to a service or a referral, they can provide you with brief counselling. So what I would advise is approach your teachers, approach your principal, and they can connect you with someone. And it's anonymous and you can have an open conversation on what's bothering you and you can, they can help provide you with additional supports. We also have a really long list of great, you know, organizations you can call directly. And we also have a, it on our website. So I can send you the link so that you can, if you want to share with folks, you can do that.
Yeah, and I'll definitely check out the TDSB website organizations. But yeah, I want to thank you for sharing all your advice and your experiences, but I'll be passing it over to Mayura now.
Thank you. Thank you, Tanija. So my part is about cyberbullying, which you mentioned that you had experience with, you were cyberbullied before. So my first question is, our generation was born into technology and has the downside of constant anonymity. You know, feeling that we can just say anything behind the screen and we're safe. So do you think that this has made us less accountable for our actions online? And if so, what are things that we can change, to change and take accountability?
There are always going to be people that think it's okay to bully and attack you. They think that, hey, I'm, I can hide behind this fake account, this fake username and no one's going to find me and it's okay. And I just want to tell those people that it's not the case anymore. And as someone that was cyberbullied, we were able to find out who it was and deal with it accordingly. And more so, if you are a student, this will be dealt with in the appropriate means. Just because you're at home on a computer doesn't mean that you're not accountable to your actions. And as someone part of the school board, I've seen it where things happen after school, they happen online and it is still dealt with when it comes, when teachers and the school, the staff find out about it. And to other folks, to those of us on social media, like you said, we can't live in a world where we're not on social media or online somehow. It's become part of our lives, whether through school or through work. So what I would advise is just make sure you're safe, you're being very, very, very safe. Sometimes you may think, oh, I'm sharing this with a friend, it's private, phones could get hacked, accounts can get hacked. And it's very, it's very easy for something to be stolen. And sometimes we assume that things can disappear on the internet. But the internet, everything is permanent and it's there to stay. And I think a lot of, a lot of folks think otherwise, but I just want to reiterate that when something is on the internet, it's on there. No matter how, no matter how many people might say that it'll disappear or will come back, it's, it's there. So please be mindful of what you're posting and also who you're talking with. I think it's really easy to come across someone that you may not know. And while it's a great source for networking, be careful with how much information you're sharing. No one should know your personal details of where you live or where you work. And if you're talking to someone and they're telling you to keep something a secret, that's probably a red flag that you should be very aware of. No one should be telling you or controlling you or telling you to keep something a secret. And I think those are some steps that we can take to keep, make sure that we're being cautious and careful.
Definitely. I mean, the internet is extremely widespread, but it's. And so is it possible for you to elaborate more on your experiences with cyberbullying and what, what your experience with that was?
So I was always very active on social media. I think I was using as a tool to share as an artist, I share my, my dance work, but also connect with other artists. And it started off with just a few messages, like coming into my inbox with just very hurtful language. At first it was just thinking of any, the worst curse words in Tamil and just using that against me. And even though half the time I didn't understand what they were saying, I knew the intent was to cause harm. So it started off that way and then eventually it got more and more aggressive. They started reaching out to my mom and telling her, you know, you're not, your daughter isn't who, who you think she is. And I think the reason they did that was because they knew that my mom was my support. So I think they were trying to, you know, turn her against me and maybe isolate me. They would take pictures that, you know, were public and, you know, defame it. They would draw like genitalia around my, my pictures of me. They would say that if I was, I was working with a youth alliance, a youth organization at the time, and we were putting on events. We were holding a dance competition. So they would threaten me saying they're going to show up at the dance event and, and hurt me. So it was, it was becoming more and more violent to, to an extent where I was getting rape threats. I was getting acid attack threats where they took my photos and said that they were going to, you know, this, they were going to abuse me in certain way. So it just, the, the harm with cyberbullying is the person doesn't even need to come close to you. You don't need to know who they are. But what they do is they just bully you enough to feel so paranoid and alone. And it's, it's, there's no reason for you to feel like you did something wrong, but that's the thing with cyberbullying, right? It happens so aggressively, it's easy for you to feel guilty and ashamed and embarrassed that you don't want to talk to anyone about it. And if I can, if I can share one thing is, don't ever feel like you need to keep it to yourself or you can't tell anyone. That is the exact opposite of what you should be doing. When you notice that someone is attacking you and you feel unsafe, you need to share it with someone. It could be a parent, a sibling, a friend, a teacher. You need to share it with someone and take the necessary steps to make sure you feel safe. Because I, I can, I can definitely say it really impacts your own mental health and very easily it makes you feel paranoid. I think we're, if we're at school and there's a bully in the yard, you see the bully and you're aware of how close they can come. But the scary thing about online cyberbullying is that it's on your phone and you can literally be in your room in your safe space and your bully is right there. So sometimes it feels like you can't run away from them. So you need to do what's necessary to document the messages and tell the appropriate folks to deal with it.
Yeah, I mean, cyberbullying is just a whole different version of terrified. Thank you for sharing that. Yeah, I definitely can see how that could be difficult, but that was still authentic. So thank you for that. How was the problem resolved, if you don't mind sharing?
The one thing that I'm grateful for is I think being part of this community, we have a lot of resources. So when I started talking about it, I heard a lot of other people that had similar instances and situations. So from them, we went to the police and we spoke with other cybercrime officers and they gave us tips on how to document it. And then they also started tracking it. So we did eventually find the person because again, I think some people think that they can hide their IP address. But it's, it's happening so often now that there's also ways of finding out who's doing it and, and tracking it down. So the first step again is to tell someone. And if you find that it's becoming repetitive and more aggressive, go to the police and they'll tell you what next steps to take.
Wow, yeah, thank you. With the, with the telling people and, you know, your elders, sometimes it's difficult to talk to elders about these kinds of things. So how can we encourage students to speak up about these things without feeling embarrassed to guardians and parents and teachers?
Again, I think it's so easy to feel embarrassed and ashamed, but we also have to think about our own safety. If you're starting to feel alone and paranoid, I say when you start feeling paranoid and not safe, that's probably a good sign that you need to tell someone. Some situations will be more trickier than others. There may be more, there may be something involved that someone's using to blackmail you or ha, they may have something against you. But just always remember, at the end of the day, our parents, our guardians, our teachers, no one is going to judge you. They'll always be there to protect you because they care for you. And while it may be a difficult conversation to begin with, I assure you, once you start having it, they'll start to think, okay, what are next steps we can take? And if, if mom and dad or the guardian don't have an idea of what next steps are, go to your teachers, go to your principals. Because a lot of, since all of our kids are online right now, the, the, this is happening frequently. So they may have a better idea of how to deal with this. So approach your teachers.
Definitely. I think because embarrassment is kind of what people, they don't say anything about it. But once you get past that, it's just about your safety and your wellbeing.
And you know who you are, right? A bully is going to say everything negative and nasty about you. But does that mean it's true? No, because you know who you are and that's all that matters.
Definitely, yeah. And then on the other side of it, if we notice someone being cyberbullied, what are some advice do you have that we can advocate for them without being kind of what's known as a snitch, you know? And then what are those online platforms that students can use as well?
I think it depends. And it depends on where it's happening. If, if you're on social media, like in a comment section or in YouTube and someone is picking on you, I think it's easier for the person to remove themselves from that than trying to get the other person to stop. I think certain situations are easier to avoid. But if it's on your own platform, don't engage, just block and not engage with the person. Cause I think once you start engaging, you're, you're giving in to what the bully wants. So what I would say is just block and don't engage. And if you're using a school account or if it's happening at school, just let your teacher know. Take a screenshot of it and send it and let your teacher know. I think sometimes we hear that often where a student may initially have some hesitation to talk to their teachers. And when we ask why, it's because they don't want someone else to find out that they told on the bully or they told on someone else. But if you, if you tell the teacher, they're not going to tell anyone. They're just going to deal with it appropriately and it's your personal safety. No one's going to know about it.
Yeah, exactly. When their identity is gone, they lose their power.
Yeah.
And then, thank you. And then my last question is just what resources do the TDSB provide that are available for students to help them manage any of these cyberbullying issues?
What we usually have is something called an organizational response team. So right away, a group of folks will come together and they usually consist of your principal, caring and safe schools, your social worker, and they'll see how to support the victim. So that's why I mean, like when something's happened, the quicker you tell a teacher or principal, the quicker they can act on it. And the TDSB is so vast. We have a very large support system for different types of supports, whether it be, you know, social work or mental health support. And the quicker you share and disclose it, then they can provide the support to make sure you're okay.
Yeah, wow, thank you. Those are all great. Those are my questions. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Mayura.
Well, Yalini, there's, there's a lot of things that you've covered on mental health and cyberbullying and also personal stories. And I really appreciate you sharing your personal story as well. And definitely understand why you're not on social media at this point because of those reasons. We, I'd like to cover the aspect of expelled and suspended students. But before we get to that, there has been some research that has been shown. One of my students actually pulled this up by the TDSB website, which states that the high school dropout rate in TDSB is 10%, which is in 2018, 1,442 students. So as a trustee, how are you finding this rate now? Is it increasing? What sort of actions is the school board doing to reduce that dropout rate?
I think there are many reasons why a student may drop out. And I think one student dropping out is a failure on the entire system. And I think that's why it's extremely important that students from a young age are engaged, are engaged into the system. And that's why it's important that when we see that maybe a reading level is low or a student needs more help, that that support is available to them. Because when students feel that they're not, they're not, when they're ashamed or they are made to think that they're not smart, then that's one reason why they may pull away. But no student is not smart. We all just have different strengths and weaknesses. And it's about providing enough learning opportunities where all of those are, those strengths are engaged. So if it's an art form or a sports team, it's important to have different learning opportunities for students to feel like they're being engaged in the school system. That engagement piece, I keep saying engagement, but it is very important. When a kid doesn't feel comfortable at their school, that's a red flag. Every student needs to feel welcome and protected while they're at school. And it's like when we talk about, you know, if you judge a fish by its ability to climb a tree, it's going to live its whole life thinking it's not smart. But again, all of our students are smart. They just have different strengths and weaknesses. And it's about trustees' responsibility or the school boards, all of our responsibility to make sure that that school system is reflective of all students, not just the ones that are, are good in math and sciences.
Okay, so when, when, is there some kind of preventative measures that we take? If we know that a student is going to drop out, are there any preventative measures? You said join clubs and probably not, not in alignment with what's happening in class. So what are those preventative measures that, that one can take, that parents can take?
I think if we know a student is going to drop out, I think it's already too late. Because that student dropping out is just accumulation of years and years of not feeling engaged, not feeling welcome, not feeling protected, not feeling interested. So I think that's why we have to come back to our elementary students. And when a student is missing school in elementary, why are they missing school? Because when, I always, I sit a lot on the suspension and expulsion hearings. One thing I always look at is attendance. Because I think when we see students missing a lot of school, there's a different reason. It's not because they're just bored and they're going to blow up. There, there has to be a deeper reason to it. And I think that's why I keep saying it's that engagement piece when they're in elementary school and when they're transitioning into high school. That is such a crucial time for every student. The amount of stress they're facing, changing friends, peer pressure, mental health, feeling that at home, you know, my parents will understand my situation. I feel alone. All those stresses contribute to how a student feels while they're at school. So that's why I keep saying, while we should prevent students from dropping out in high school, I think that starts early on when we start to see these little behaviors. And even in high school, teachers try very hard to engage with students. We say that there was actually a previous year, there was a survey, a student survey that was conducted. And you know, when you think of a high school kid, you, some may assume that they want, you know, more recess or more time with their friends. But one thing that every student had requested was they want more caring adults in the school. Meaning they want more people they can trust in the school. Because at that time, you know, maybe at home, mom and dad or an older sibling may not get what they're, what they're feeling. But a teacher, someone where they think, you know, it's more anonymous, it's more confidential, it's more personal and they can have access to someone. So rather than, I think, rather than look at how can we prevent kids from dropping out? I think it's more so how can we make kids feel more welcome and welcomed at school?
Yeah, okay, wow, that's, that's, there's, yeah, like you mentioned, Yalini, there are so many measures that we can take way before the dropout rate. And there's many reasons to why that happens. I'm so glad that you've touched upon certain areas. Now we'll come to the area. Now we'll come to the area that you're specialized in is about expelled and expelled and suspended students. So I'm to understand that when a student is going through that, is either expelled or suspended, there is actually a process in place that you can go and appeal your situation. Is, is there something like that that you're aware of?
There is. And I think one thing we, we first, it's kind of similar to like the, the dropout question. When we look at students are being suspended, no student is bad. I think they're just making bad choices. And again, when we're looking at a student being suspended, it becomes a question of, okay, well, a student brought a weapon to school. Why do they bring a weapon to school? Why do they feel that they're not safe or that someone else will not protect them, right? Because when we go to school, we go with the belief thinking, okay, my principal, my teacher is looking me safe. But if a student is bringing a weapon that they feel they need to protect themselves, why? So I think these hearings are opportunities for us to hear about students and what their concerns are. So in a suspension hearing, usually when a student is suspended, it can be from one day to 20 days. And if a parent or the student feels that the principal or the school made the wrong choice, they can appeal the, the suspension. So what, what they can do is they can take it to a hearing. And at a hearing, three trustees will, will come, will attend, and they represent the school board. And the principal will come and the student will come, and they'll both have a chance to share their side of their story. And the trustees can ask questions to the principal, to the family, and then they'll, they can decide on whether they want to expunge, like get rid of the record of the suspension or maybe reduce it. Maybe they thought, you know, 10 days is too much, I'd rather it be reduced to five days. So there is an opportunity for that conversation. And I think suspension hearings are useful because when trustees attend, they're, they're meeting students that are very vulnerable. Of course, there are going to be students that have said things that are racist, that have done, you know, there may have been sexual violence involved, bringing a weapon to school. There are more serious things that are more clear cut. But there are also situations where, are very eye-opening. You see students that have been victims to very unfair situations. You hear of some students' stories where from a young age, for no, for no fault of their own, were victims of really horrible situations. And because of lack of support or lack of care, they made these poor decisions. And it's very eye-opening to see certain situations that students have to face at a very young age. Some of the things I've heard have really made me, you know, so sad because our expectation of our children is they go to school happy, carefree, loved, feeling welcome. But there are children out there that don't feel loved, that don't feel taken care of, that feel that no one is there to protect them. And those students that fall through the cracks, they're the ones that make bad decisions. So it's again, really important for us to look at, how can we support all of our students from a young age?
Okay. And can I just ask, so when a student is suspended, when that decision is being made, obviously there's, is there something, are the parents aware that this is going to happen? Or is it just like, okay, they're suspended? Is that how?
You know, usually if something happens, then there needs to be a conversation that takes place with the principal and the family. And depending on the student's age, the student will know as well. So you, you, there are certain things that have to happen. Make sure that the, the principal spoke to the parent. And if, again, in the process, if the parent felt that something wasn't right, they didn't follow procedure, you can appeal it. So I want parents to make sure they know that because there is a level of suspensions and expulsions happening. But sometimes it's not, the number of hearings or appeals happening isn't the same, it's, it's less. So it shows that not a lot of families are appealing a suspension.
So when a family wants to appeal, is it just telling the principal, I want to appeal? Or is there an application form or something that they can fill up?
Yeah, so the principal should let them know. And I believe our, our TDSB, we have like our registrar who represents the student discipline committee. And I believe that they should reach, reach out to them.
Well, we talked about mental health, cyberbullying and expel, expelled and suspension. And these are very, very heavy topics. So let's go into something a little more, well, a little more lighthearted, I guess. These are students who are in high school and they want to choose their path. They are probably motivated students, they love the arts or something. What are the resources out there for a high school student to know, hey, there are all these specialized paths that I can take and explore? And at what grade should they be contemplating that? Should they be contemplating that at grade seven? Because I know high school starts at grade nine. Yeah, so if you can just cover that, Yalini.
We do have a few programs. So we do have French streams. So we have extended French and immersion. Unfortunately, extended French is being phased out, but we do have immersion. And immersion can start earlier in elementary school. So if parents, you know, there are some jobs out there that are bilingual and you need French. And while you can take French as a subject in grade four, you can also apply for like the immersion program. And that's a French stream that happens in elementary school. And then in high school, we do have specialized programming. So we have the IB program. We have, there's some high schools that have an arts program and an athletic program. So every high school is different. And you can apply to them. It just depends on if they have optional attendance and if it's open or closed. Because some schools, they fill up really quickly and their attendance is closed. But if a school has open or limited optional attendance, you can apply to it and you may get into it.
So sorry, when you say optional attendance, is that part of the school term?
Optional attendance means that it's not their homeschool, but they can, they want to attend it.
So for a student who's in, say, grade seven right now and thinking, I don't know if grade sevens do that, but grade seven or grade eight and thinking, okay, I'm going to high school, would they, is there kind of a website that they can go to to know which school is specialized in something so that they can narrow it down? You're a student who is interested only in STEM at this point. What are the schools that are out there that just focus on STEM and can help me get to University of Waterloo? Let's just say, very high level.
So on our TDSB website, we have all of our high schools, all of our schools. So if you just search a school, it'll break down the programs they have and it'll also mention if they have optional attendance, if it's limited, if it's closed. It breaks everything down. So I think our TDSB website is amazing. You can find all kinds of information on there, including individual school sites and their information.
Awesome, all right. This, this has been such a very interesting topic, just covering so many, so many areas, Yalini. And I really, really thank you so much for your time today.
Not at all, I really enjoyed it. And as much as I'm happy speaking to you, Anu, I'm extremely proud to speak to Mayura and Dhanaja because I think these are the generation that are up and coming. And I'm really excited to see all the things you're about to achieve. I've always been so proud of our youth, they're very innovative. And I'm really excited to see what Mayura and Dhanaja and everyone else is going to be up to.
I am too. I'm really excited. That's why I do what I do, because I think the next generation has a lot to give back and we can really help them, really change their trajectory or empower them to do more and bigger things. And any little thing that you or me can do definitely does help. And again.
Space, Anu, and that's so important. So of course, thank you to you for creating these spaces for students to try things and, and, and think about it too.
Yeah, thank you. Again, thank you very much, Yalini.
Not at all.
All right. See you guys. Bye.